Welcome everybody to our city council meeting. I think this is on. And I'm gonna have some of the Friends of the Parks come up. Jane, would you like to come up and bring everybody else? And I'm gonna turn it over to you.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, we are happy to be here. We have some of our board members here. There are nine on our board. Michael Everly is here. He's our vice president. Susie Malhop, Kimberly Hansen, Cindy Fenter, Dick Thornton, and three of ours are Janice Ruon, Joe Galloway, and Amy Galloway are out of town today, so I'm sorry they're not here with us as well. For our staff, we have obviously Ben Page that helps us, and Tiva Dawson. So we're very in capable hands here. So, okay, we wanted to come to you. We were formed the Friends of the Des Moines Parks. And my name is Jane Hine. I serve as president. And we formed about four years ago. The first year we came, we presented a check for swimming lessons for $2,500 for kids that were not able to afford to take swimming lessons. And that's how much we raised that year. Last year, when we came to you for the year 2010, 11, I'm sorry, we raised and gave back to our community $50,500-some dollars, which we're growing. It takes a while to raise these funds. We get money through grants. We get money through memberships. Anywhere we can, we try to bring this in. And we have about 15 projects that we did this past year. We gave swim lessons, to scholarships, to some of the English language learners, and two of the high schools. In our five city pools this year, where we had a bumper crop of swimmers due to the hot weather. And we also have other projects going, such as down at Gray's Lake, we're implementing a boat lift, canoe lift, for those individuals that do not, are not able, physically impaired individuals, is the way I guess I will say it. So we're looking forward to that in May. We're going to be bringing that out, but we do have the funding for that. Ewing Lilacs, we're working on that. We have all kinds of projects going. But this year, we are happy to present to our mayor, from what we have given back to the community, we have three times as much money this year. Where is our check? Dr. Everly, you present that to the mayor. It's for $174,695.35. So, we trekked our money that we did last year. And we are working with the community foundation in hopes that we can move further ahead. And we do above and beyond things that our tax dollars cannot handle. So if any of you are interested, or would like to have speakers, or anything such as that, we would be more than happy to oblige. We present this to our community again, $174,695.35. So...
I don't know what we can say to that, other than keep up the great, great work. And this is a program, and these guys have started, and women most importantly, that really reaches out to those in our community that are disadvantaged in some fashion, and have some kids paid, and a lot of activities, recreation, and life-saving programs. And the swimming lessons are really, really valuable to folks, especially some of the folks that are, English is a second language. So thank you, thank you so much. And I'm gonna turn this over to our Parks Department, Tiva and Ben. But thank you again. Let's hit a picture, and again, let's give one more big round of applause. Question? Eyes open.
Okay, thank you. Nice job. All right.
How was March?
Hey, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Counsel.
This is it? I want to call to order the meeting of the Municipal Housing Agency Governing Board for January 28th. I would like the clerk to please take roll.
County?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Grease?
Here.
Mahaffey?
Here.
Hensley?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Item two is authorizing the city manager to release the mortgage and related security instruments for Laura Stewart of 2704 East 38th Court pursuant to the 5H Affordable Home Ownership Program, Board Communication Number 13-041. Is there anybody in the audience to speak on this item? Seeing none, could we have a motion? Again, that's authorizing the manager to release the mortgage.
Move.
It's been moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Item three is approving the construction contract with Bergstrom Construction, Inc. for the rehabilitation of nine 5H homeownership, single-family homes, Board Communication Number 13-29. Is there anybody in the audience to speak on these homes? Nine 5H homeownership, single-family homes, approving a construction contract. Seeing none, could we have a motion, please?
I'd move in favor of Bergstrom Construction.
All right. It's been moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The item passes. Could we have a motion to adjourn, please? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We said adjourned. Prior to starting our city council meeting, we've got about 10 seconds, but I'd like to have Candy Rindell come up. We had a great announcement over the weekend concerning RagBri, and Candy has really been our main contact on this up to now. Candy, tell us what's going on.
Thank you, Mayor, again. Candy Rindell, Assistant to the City Manager. We will be host to an overnight stop for RagBri on Tuesday, July 23rd. So it's, as the mayor said in a text to me, it's gonna be an epic party. We're very excited to host RagBri, and we'll have a great committee in place to start the planning.
How many riders, we thinking?
13,000. That's just riders. Now, again, from, you know, a lot of people go from Perry to Des Moines if they live in Des Moines, so it may increase to maybe 30. I think 13 is the whole route, you know, you go the whole route.
Sure.
But it increases, you know, from day to day.
Exactly. And that ride, and that is about 46 miles from Perry, so it's...
40.6, so we'll probably see people in Des Moines by 7, 8 o'clock that morning.
That's right. That's right. Well, everybody get ready. We're gonna have a good time in Des Moines on Tuesday. Thank you, Candy.
Thank you.
Great work. All right. We've completed our Municipal Housing Agency Governing Board agenda. Let's move to our council meeting. But prior to our council meeting, we're gonna have a quick word from our own council member, Skip Moore. And I don't, Skip, you, everybody can stay seated tonight, right?
Please.
Okay. Mr. Moore?
I had the feeling there'd be quite a few neighborhood activists here tonight, and it appears there is, some from the west side, and some from the east side, and some from the south side. So this quote came to mind, and this is from Walder H. Judd, who was born in 1898 in Rising City, Nebraska. He was schooled at the University of Nebraska, and after spending a term in the military, he ended up in Minnesota. And he had 10 consecutive terms in the U.S. House of Representatives representing Minnesota. And he was known as an orator. So I pulled this out, and I just, I wanted to read this for our neighborhood activists. "People often say that in a democracy, decisions are made by a majority of the people. Of course, that is not true. Decisions are made by a majority of those who make themselves heard and vote." A very different thing. Walder H. Judd. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Skip. I will ask, let's call the meeting to order, and I will ask the clerk to take roll, please.
County?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Grease?
Here.
Mahaffey?
Here.
Hensley?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right. Item two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
Move.
It's been moved? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Jen is approved. Item three is approving our consent agenda tonight. Those are items three through 39. And we will take those as one roll call item, except if there's some items that are polled either by somebody from the audience, or potentially from our city council this evening. Of those items, three through 39, item 26E, Councilmember Hensley has pulled that and wishes to speak. Item 39, Councilmember Moore wishes to speak. Are there any other items? Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to speak to item number 35.
35? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to speak to item 36.
35 and 36. All right. For those that are marking your agendas, it's been requested, item 26E, 35, 36, and 39. Are there any others?
I'll move the remainder.
All right. All right. Let's go directly to item 26E. 26 is the application of the Iowa Economic Development Authority for enterprise zone benefits for the following. Council Communication Number 13-034. Item 26E is Gray's Landing Two, GP LLC, for the construction of 142 housing units at southwest 11th and Tuttle Street in the Gateway Enterprise Zone.
Mrs. Hensley? Thank you. I would like to ask that I be allowed to vote no on item 26E, reason being, this particular developer has several other projects that they are not compliant with. There's a disagreement as to a repayment process to NFC, which is a nonprofit that actually receives money from the city. And we have just not been successful in getting their attention, and I want to make sure we get their attention, but I don't wanna, I'll leave it up to the rest of the council as to how they want to vote. I know this is time-sensitive because they go before the Enterprise Zone Board later this week, and that would be problematic. But I will be voting no for those reasons on that, on that particular project. And I would just ask that, when we have other projects coming forward, if we know that they're not compliant with other projects that they've worked with in the city, that that really needs to be taken into account before we just automatically put them on the schedule and approve, allow them to continue to go forward? Because realistically, I think some of them, not all, but there may be one or two that are becoming spread too thin.
Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, we will certainly contact this developer. I'm not sure what all the circumstances are around this particular non-payment, but we will certainly pursue this and let the developer know of your interest. I do appreciate your comment, though, about the items on this agenda. It is my understanding, and Matt could address it in more detail, but this is a procedural step, and if these items aren't approved, then this developer is not in a position to pursue the CDBGDR application. So it is my hope, noting your concern, Mrs. Hensley, it is my hope that the council would approve the item. At least it gives them a shot at it, and it seems like the fair thing to do. But that's not to say that your point isn't well-taken. It is, and we will pursue that with the developer.
So I'll move item 26A through I, with the understanding I'm voting no on E. Okay?
All right. That's been moved. I also, just for those who read these things very, very closely, item D, there's a partner in that East Village Growth Partner, whose name is County. And I want you to all know that while our grandfathers were brothers, I have no interest whatsoever in this project, and will also, I've voted to support that as well.
Seven yes, and one no on 26E.
Right, takes us to item 35. Item 35 is an ordinance, final consideration, amending Chapter 78 of the municipal code regarding licensing and regulation of peddlers as amended. And one of our members of the audience is asked to have this item polled, and I believe the gentleman is at the podium as we speak.
Mr. Mayor, my name is Bill Peard at 785 Southeast Bob White Lane in Waki. I just want to thank the mayor and the city council, and Jeff Lester, the city attorney, for helping us work through some minor language change to approve the peddler's ordinance in its final form. Appreciate the swiftness of getting the meeting with Diane, Jeff, Candy, and I believe Doug Phillip. So, again, our appreciation for helping us get that. MediaCom is pleased with the changes, and I appreciate Christine allowing this to go through the third reading. So, thank you.
Glad it worked out. We'll move item 35.
Seven yes?
Item 36, it's an ordinance of second consideration, amending Chapter 18 of the municipal code regarding the definition of dangerous animal.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Mark White. I live at 2926 Southeast 5th Street. I walk a bit about the neighborhood for exercise, so anytime I see an animal ordinance come up for discussion, it catches my eye. This particular one, I want to let you know I support what you're trying to do as far as changing this definition goes, but I'm not sure that you go far enough. Number one, under the definition, identifies a dangerous animal as one who has bitten or clawed a person on two separate occasions within a 12-month period. Then if we go down to number four, where the change, one of the changes is going to be, we say, or we're going to say, has attacked any domestic animal or fowl on three or more separate occasions within, and then the change will be the lifetime of the animal. So the way I read this thing, if a dog that I encounter on my walking route bites me, and I avoid getting bitten by him for 12 months, the clock resets. However, if the same dog goes after a fowl or domestic animal, that's on his record for the lifetime. I guess what I'd like to see is the thing changed so that I'm on the same plane as the fowl or domestic animal that's...
Let's quick, have the city attorney address that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If council will direct their attention to Section 18196, the definition begins with the fact that if a dog or an animal is running at large, and the attack is unprovoked, and they bite or claw a person, that is by definition a dangerous animal. So the circumstance you just described, that's already in the code. When you go down below, that's just to describe vicious propensities in present or past conduct, as opposed to already being a dangerous animal per se. So the situation that you described already exists in the code. It's already a dangerous animal per se, and that would already be covered.
So it's taken care of.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing it up.
I'll move.
Item's been moved. Any discussion?
Seven yes?
All right. That takes us to item 39. Item 39 is on a request from the Smith Home Restorations, LLC to rezone 2040 East Walnut Street from R160, One Family Low-Density Residential, to Limited C2, general retail and highway-oriented commercial, to allow the reuse as a building contractor's office, small engine repair shop, carpenter shop, and hobby craft shop uses. Mr. Moore?
I'm very supportive of this. However, there's one small line in here that causes me some concern, where it says small engine repair shop. And I believe that the applicant has indicated they're gonna do vehicle, some vehicle repair inside the building. Checked with community development, and their definition includes chainsaws, lawn mowers, cars, trucks, and there's a huge difference between the two. I would like to change that to vehicle repair, and then also refer it back to staff for, we need to have definitions for both. And so the people in the audience understand my concern is, when you test a small engine, which is like a chainsaw, you take it outside and you run it at the highest RPMs it can while you're testing it, and setting the carburetor calibrations, everything. Vehicles are generally inside the building with an exhaust tube that goes through the door. I don't believe the applicant would take a chainsaw out at 7:00 in the morning and run it high speed, but if they were to sell this property, you could put a, P&amp;P could expand there and start doing chainsaw repair there. So I've got a little concern on this. But can, can we make that change?
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Moore, councilmembers, we'd be happy to take a look at it. Mr. Moore, I can't say sitting right here exactly the best way to approach it, but I understand your point very well, and we will take a look at it with our staff and with legal, and report back to you.
Thank you. I'll move 39.
So is it gonna be moved to approve the second reading? It's gonna come back one more?
I believe we would have to, tell staff.
So you're moving the second reading, and it'll come back, and we'll have the changes for the third reading?
Unless we can do it tonight.
Just, just to clarify, if the, if there's a change in circumstances, change in the acceptance of rezoning ordinance conditions, that would require...
Going back to P and Z.
Going back, well, at least would require a new notice and hearing to council, maybe not all the way back, depending on the change in circumstances, but at least new notice and hearing, and a new executed document.
Mike?
Mayor, County, members of the council, Michael Ludwig, Planning Administrator. If you would like a text amendment, you can make a motion to refer that back to the Planning Commission, and staff can work with the commission to come up with those definitions and make a recommendation, and bring that back to you as an ordinance change. But if you're wanting to do it as part of the zoning itself, Mr. Lester is correct, you would need to reopen the hearing and advertise that, that change.
We can move the zoning tonight, and then ask for a text change at a later date, and that...
Correct. You could, you could ask, you could direct staff to work with the Planning Commission on that text change tonight if you want. There's no requirement for notice of that.
Cal, move it as it's written, and then I'll ask to have it referred back for the text change to staff.
Thank you.
All right. That completes the consent agenda. Takes us to ordinances, first consideration, item 40, to establish the Ingersoll Grand Self- To establish the Ingersoll Grand Self-Supervised Municipal Improvement District Smith, six affirmative votes are required for passage. Council communication number 13-030A is the final consideration in the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by Ted Irvine on behalf of the petitioners and also requires six votes. Right? Anybody in the audience to speak to this item?
They're shaking their heads no, but they're out there in support. You guys want to just... This has been the crew out here that has been leading the charge, and the fact that really we have not had anybody speak in opposition to this, other than one misunderstanding at one of the council meetings, speaks volume as to the job and the process that they've gone through as a group. So I don't know that I would have felt comfortable at the beginning of this process saying I'd like to waive and vote to waive the readings, but the fact that we've not had anybody here, I'm very comfortable with that, and it allows them to continue the progress moving forward. They continue to work closely with Downtown Community Alliance. Glenn Lyons has been very involved with them. Ted Irvine will continue to work hard on this through the process, even though the Smith does not go in effect until July 1st. So it is my pleasure to move item 4040A.
I'm going to abstain on this item as we have property located within the boundaries.
But we still get your money, right?
That's true.
All right.
And I recruise myself for that also.
Very good. Thank you.
Well done.
Great work.
Thanks.
Yep. Counsel request, this from our own council member, Chris Coleman, to speak regarding orientation and training for city boards and commissions. Certainly, I think that, Mr. Coleman, I look forward to the conversation. We've only done that, but we used to have a leadership, city leadership training that people that wanted to be on boards and commissions, so turn it over to you.
Yeah, a number of us have had the chance to interact on this subject, so I guess I get the credit for having it on the agenda under my name, but I think many of us have shared some thoughts about this, so anybody can chime in. The purpose of bringing this up tonight is in, you know, in an open meeting and discussion here in public, setting a course for better education and understanding of expectations for our boards and the commissioners that serve on them. This is not about any one issue or being critical of anyone, but I think all of us have shared some level of desire and hope that our boards and commissions are well-educated about their statutory requirements, the expectations from the council, and that they're educated and orientated so that they're able to really succeed on our commissions. It's a great thing. I think we still have over 30 commissions. How many? I'm looking at Diane.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two commissions that have anywhere from, you know, seven to 15 members, some a few more than that. So the volunteerism and civic engagement from the citizens, I think, is outstanding in this community, and we ought to do what's necessary to arm them with the information and a set of expectations from the council that they concede, can succeed, and their time be very positive and impactful. My idea is that through council action, we ask the city clerk, along with the city attorney and the city manager, to develop a training program that we request, it might be a little bit different from commission to commission, that has some regulatory requirements, but that we ask those commissioners as part of their initial nomination or through the process today to be, to go through something like this and to develop something that is strong. And I, for one, would like to kind of have it reported as to who was able to attend and how they went and how they thought the trainings went. I've talked to several of you about this before, so I know it's kind of a group idea from most of us, so chime in as you want, but that's kind of, I think, the proposal that we should have before us, so it's established as kind of a priority for the city through our three key leaders, staff leaders here.
Are you proposing it those who are members of the, or are anybody interested in being a member?
I'm talking about first, those people that are currently there and that are currently members to kind of have some ongoing orientation, training, support, education.
Christine?
I would just add, I agree with it completely. I know we've talked about it, and there's clearly a need for it, and I... Another part of the training, I believe, needs to be focused on what is appropriate and not appropriate for each respective board and commission to get involved in. I think sometimes there are committees or there are items on agendas that maybe fall outside the mission or the purpose of that particular board and commission, and I would also encourage us to look at maybe a two-tiered approach, so that you have individuals that have been on boards and commissions for a while, you know, for an extended period of time, so that could be a refresher, but also have a, for newer individuals that have just been on a board or a commission, you know, in the last six months, and for those individuals wishing to come on to a board or commission, because there's a high, there's a steep learning curve, particularly on some of the boards, and, but I think it might be counterproductive, and we might get better attendance if we had a two-tiered type of...
Yeah, that's probably a good idea.
I think for those who are interested, they may find some information out that would make them not want to be on a board.
Absolutely.
You need to let them re-determine what their responsibilities are to be on a board, so...
If I could add one thing that I didn't say before, and that is, I hope this gives us a chance to also kind of go through previous directives or files, opinions, and so forth, and clean those up so that the staff that support these commissions, you know, are involved in the training and help pull it off, but that we're really clear about the kinds of advice that we give these boards and commissions as well. And, you know, over time, we cycle through city councils and mayors and city attorneys and managers, and I think it's probably a good exercise, it hasn't happened for a long time, to really pay attention to the kind of guiding principles of many of these commissions, because that's how our staff advises and encourage and recommends to these commissions.
One comment, then I think the manager has something. Hopefully, I think that there's an expectation that we have as elected members regarding the input that we get from boards and commissions and how we work with them, and I think it'd be good for, in a lot of cases, one or more of the council members to also attend the trainings and kind of tell them, you know, here's how we work together, and let's try to have open civil discussions about all of our responsibilities, and what ours is elected officials, certainly is a little different than a board or commission, but we really respect all their input that they give us on items that are put before those boards, and we hope that they respect our codes and decisions that we make at this level, and hopefully we can have a two-way communication as we work out a lot of the details. Mr. Manager, and then we have a speaker.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. You made one of the two points I wanted to mention as well. The city attorney and I and some of the departments have had a chance to kick this around just a little bit, seeing it on the agenda. And two things I would offer. One is, this has to be thoughtfully prepared. It's not something we can do in the next week or so, so it's like having a curriculum in preparing materials that are well researched and easy to understand so that we can provide good information to all of the members of the boards and commissions. I understand the point about the two-tier. I think that can be built into the process as well. Then the second point is the one that the mayor has already mentioned, but just to amplify, we're happy, of course, to work on this, if that's your direction, but it's also going to be, I think, important for the mayor and council members to, maybe you don't have to sit through the entire sessions, but to be there at the beginning and indicate your support and leadership for the initiative. After all, it's coming from you, and I think it's important, since those folks are appointed by you, that you indicate that you're interested in this and have support for it. So I would urge your participation at some level, again, not through all of the sessions perhaps, but at least enough to know, so the folks participating know that you are supportive of the effort that we're going through. It's a terrific idea, though. I couldn't be more supportive, given the significance that our boards and commissions have in the decisions that are made by this council.
Have a speaker. If you'd give us your name and address, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Brian Miller, 3920 Leonard Drive. I couldn't agree more, and I thank the council for bringing this forward. About 12 or 13 years ago, when I got appointed to the Plan and Zoning Commission, even though I attended the meetings, I really didn't know the insights, and several of you have sat on that. And so I asked Councilman Velasquez what I should do, and he told me go and see Jim Grant, our community development director back then. And I spent half a day, you know, in the armory, going around, meeting people, learning, being told, you know, things, and Larry Hall schooled me on some things. So I see a real value in this. A lot of people have never had that, to find out some of the important things that they need to know. But I, and I agree with Councilman Mahaffey, it's important, and I guess I'd never thought of this, to kind of give an overview to people that are thinking about being on boards and commissions, and maybe a small prequalification process, because I know some of you have heartburn with some of the people that are on some of the lists and whether or not, you know, you really feel that they're qualified for the job or not. So that could be a component to it. As to the charge, that's going to have to be, I agree, many times I asked what the charge was of the Plan and Zoning Commission according to the state, our exact view, and one time it came up that a financial aspect of a project concerns several of us. And we were told by certain representatives of the city that they felt it wasn't appropriate for the Plan and Zoning Commission members to comment on that. It was found, though, that we actually could if it had a significant impact on the city's budget. So we need to make sure we have very accurate information for these boards and commissions, why they're there. I think you're going to get a lot better work product out of them, because you always see the deer in the headlights at the beginning, and they really are trying to get their feet wet. And I know I sat beside Jim Grant, the mayor, for a long time and learned and was schooled on what was proper or not, and so, and I enjoyed my years doing it. So thank you for bringing this up.
And thanks for years of service on the commission. Mr. Coleman, a motion?
My motion would be to ask the city clerk, attorney, and manager to develop a training and orientation program for existing and new board and commission members to take into consideration the ideas that were voiced here in terms of tiered suggestions and involvement of the council and making sure that staff are also preparing for these trainings and participating and looking at our archives to make sure that our policies are clear and up to date in the way that we govern and advise these councils, commissions. So that's a long motion. Diane, you're the one that has to type it, sorry.
Seven yes.
All right, takes us to communications and reports. Item 42 has been withdrawn at the request of the applicant. Item 43, from Charles Von der Heidt, 1659 East Euclid Avenue, to speak regarding the state of scouting in Des Moines.
Good evening. As I mentioned, Charles Von der Heidt, Director of Field Service with the Mid-Iowa Council, here just to give you a quick update on our 2012. Is it proper if I hand out some? Yes. There you go. What's coming around is our 2012 annual report summary. For 103 years, the Boy Scouts of America have been providing the preeminent leadership training for youth. Just wanted to give you a quick highlight of what's going on currently with scouting here in the Mid-Iowa Council. First one, appreciate your support. You may remember, we had a nice little session about the new Fred May Tag II Service Center, which there are some nice pictures of our ground, not groundbreaking, but the construction photos are there for you. The dry weather hasn't been great for farmers, but it's been great for construction. It's ahead of schedule and should be a fantastic facility, not only for Boy Scout youths, but also for nonprofits in the area, which will be free for their use as well. Also want to point out our success in our after-school programs for those youth, either through social, economic, or regional issues, do not have the same access to scouting that other youth do. We had an 11% increase in the number of youth that participate in our after-school programs. Over 600 youth are currently being served. Assistance for everything from uniforms to books to camp fees. We don't want costs to be an issue for youth to receive scouting. And finally, Camp Matigua celebrates its 90th consecutive camping season this summer. We're excited to have many 90th anniversary activities happening at camp. We're expecting to invite several thousand Matigua alumni back for an event on June 15th. So look for an invitation to come up, have some, maybe some burnt hot dogs and hamburgers, and enjoy Camp Matigua's 90th anniversary. But again, on behalf of the Mid-Iowa Council, the Boy Scouts of America appreciate the city's support, and if there's anything that the scouting community can do to make Des Moines a better place, please don't hesitate to ask. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You all right?
I'll move to receive and file the information.
Ballot, paper, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Item passes. Thank you, Charles. Let's open our hearings at 5:03. First item, number 44, on the conveyance of a portion of property at 1823 Raccoon Street to Dwayne E. Saban and Catherine R. Saban for $8,900. Council communication number 13-026. Is there anybody in the audience to speak on this item? Again, it's a conveyance of a portion of property.
Move.
Item 45, on the conveyance of the right-of-way agreement to Mid-American Energy Company for relocation of overhead electric lines for the Southeast Connector Project for $1. A is approving the reimbursement agreement and right-of-way agreement. Council communication number 13-24. Anybody in the audience to speak to this item?
Move.
Seeing none, it's been moved. Any discussion?
Six yes.
Item 46, on the vacation and conveyance of a portion of excess Southeast 18th Street right-of-way to Ammon Packing Company, $5,450. Council communication number 13-23. A is the first consideration in the ordinance above, and B is the final consideration in the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by Ammon Packing Company and requires six votes. Anybody in the audience to speak on this item? Seeing none, could we have a motion?
Move. Six yes.
Item 47, items regarding the request from SPTIHS Property Trust, represented by David Hagerty, regarding property at 2401 East 8th Street to allow expansion of the existing legal non-conforming residential nursing care facility to provide a breezeway and entry vestibule connecting two existing wings of the building. A is approving the amendment to the 2020 Community Character Land Use Plan, future land use designation from low-density residential to medium-density residential. B is a hearing on rezoning of the property from R160, One Family Low Density Residential to Limited R3 Multi-Family Residential, subject to conditions. C is the first consideration in the ordinance above. D is the final consideration in the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by the community development director and requires six votes. Is there anybody in the audience to speak on this item? Number 47 regarding 2401 East 8th Street.
I would move this, 47, A, B, C, and D. They've been in the location for a number of years, they're good neighbors, and they certainly provide a service that's needed.
Six yes.
All right, that's 47, A, B, C, and D. Correct?
Right.
Okay, 48, and the request from Kent Lay's owner to rezone 2425 Euclid Avenue from C2, general retail and highway-oriented commercial to M1 Light Industrial to a C-2, general retail and highway-oriented commercial to M-1, light industrial, to allow reuse for warehousing and contractor storage. Plan and Zoning Commission recommends denial. A, any motion to, A is a motion to deny rezoning, or B, an alternate motion to approve the rezoning. One under that would be approving the amendment to the 2020 Community Character Land Use Plan to revise the future land use designation from commercial, auto-oriented, community commercial to general industrial. Two would be the first consideration of that rezoning. Again, the Plan and Zoning Commission recommends denial. 2425 Euclid Avenue. Is there anybody here to speak to this? Have a gentleman right here?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Brian Miller, 3920 Leonard Drive. I'm here representing the Lower Beaver Neighborhood Board. I believe you all got in your packet a letter from the Lower Beaver Neighborhood that went to the zoning, the Plan and Zoning Commission. On December 15th, our board went to an open house of this property and met with the applicant, reviewed what he wanted to do, toured his property, and was very surprised at what a great operation he had there. He was conducting an M1 use, which is not allowed in that area, but we were, we were pretty surprised. And in checking on him, this is a first-class guy in what he does. He manages small rental properties for people and does a great job, and a lot of neighborhood leaders have accolades about him. I wish he did large properties. We have several that he could do. We also discussed with him a variance for this property, and he was unaware of what that would entail and stuff. We explained it to him. So then we met as a board, and we had some neighborhood residents there, too. And we stood on his lot and discussed all the issues. Even one of our board members uses him for a rental home that they own. And he had a lot of trouble speaking against this item. And so we reviewed everything on it. So as a board, we voted to go against this. But with the caveat, and we met with him afterwards, that we were going to support the uses in a conceptual form with some restrictions, and work with him to get a variance through the Board of Adjustment. Now, it may take a little bit of work to get that done and everything and stuff, but we believe that, that what he's doing and what he proposes is going to be a fit, especially with the screening. And we're all for more business in our neighborhood, and certainly the city needs every bit of business that they can get. So, so we, we are asking you to go ahead and deny this, and if you can waive the other readings, that's fine. We will work with him to come up with a plan with city staff to go for a variance, and we'll make sure that all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed, so that we won't come back later with heartburn, because once it goes, it goes. But a rezoning goes with the property, and a variance goes with the use. And so I ask you to, to consider the position of my neighborhood board, and residents that we've discussed, and even some of the business owners that couldn't be a part of this. People like Randy Thompson, has a huge investment along Douglas, and is, is one of those economic engines for an area like that. He's bringing in a new business across the street from his property. I don't know if it's done yet, but I hear their coffee and doughnuts are pretty good. So, so with that, I'll be glad to entertain any questions.
Brian, thank you.
Thank you.
We don't need to have further readings on a denial, and denial is a denial. That would be then, or?
In, unless anyone has anything to add, we've done this in a few similar incidents in the last couple of months, I think. Go ahead.
No, I agree with what you're saying.
I was going to move the denial with, with putting in the record that the council is very supportive of this business moving forward to the zoning Board of Adjustment with, with the intent of getting a variance.
Can I just add a friendly amendment to that? And because, as you indicated, we've done several of these, or it seems like we've had a few of them recently. The comment that has come back to me is, is when they then go to apply through the zoning Board of Adjustment, they get assessed another fee. And, you know, that seems a little bit inappropriate, that they would have to pay for another fee. In those circumstances, I can't, it's not a large fee, but as a small business, it's a large fee. And I just think that if they've already gone through P and Z, and we're processing a denial, recommending they go to zoning Board of Adjustment, that there should be some consideration. Maybe you still have to charge a little fee, but I don't think they should have to pay the full fee.
Yeah, understood. I'd be happy to do that, and if it's acceptable to legal, I'd be happy to waive the fee in this instance.
I'm not sure that we want to waive it right here, but if we could look to legal to give us some comeback on how we would handle those in the future, just so that we can demonstrate that there's consideration, we're sensitive to them. Because they're normally small businesses.
But, yeah, I don't want a general policy for it. You know, gener, I mean, the fact that we deny it, I don't want every, you know, denial from this table to get a fee waived at the zoning Board of Adjustment.
Let us work on that, if you would, council members. I have some concerns about selectively waiving fees. That has the tendency to wind up unintentionally waiving everyone's fee. So let us try to put something together for you on that, that we feel can be enforceable. If there's, as opposed to waiving, there might be a way to incorporate an additional amount initially, or a checklist, something like that. So we'll take a look at that for you.
Very good.
Understood. Thanks, Jeff.
Takes us to item 49, a request from St. Gregory Centers Holdings LLC regarding 6151 Thornton Avenue for Seventh Amendment to the Airport Commercial Commerce Park West PUD Conceptual Plan to allow conversion of the existing 19,000 square foot of a 38,317 square foot building to rehabilitation center where 6,000 feet is proposed for general office use, 3,000 square feet is proposed for medical outpatient clinic use, and 10,000 square feet is proposed for residential social detoxification use. Subject to conditions, requires six votes due to percentage of opposition. Is there anybody in the audience to speak on this item?
Mayor, my name is Mike Vasquez. I reside at 3807 Thornton Avenue, and I'm actually the applicant for the property at 6151 Thornton. I'm also the CEO of St. Gregory Holdings. And I really am just speaking to clarify the application, so it's understood, and it seems like once that clarification's been made, people better understand it. The property is being, going to be guided under state licensure, it's Chapter 125, which is the rehabilitation code. However, the property will not have a rehabilitation license. It'll actually be a medical stabilization unit managed by our physicians and our nurses. People going through pain management detoxification and other detoxifications actually have a period of time for three to five days, where they aren't physically able to transfer into a facility that allows them to be cared for, whether in rehabilitation or somewhere else, similar to what would happen in an emergency room or a hospital. So that's the only licensure that we're applying for in this facility, but because it's under the code, Chapter 125, it had to be applied for this way. Once we applied for it that way, we held a neighborhood meeting for that understanding, and we had no opposition and unanimous support, which is in your packet. As well as at planning and zoning, once that clarification was made, we had unanimous support at the planning and zoning. So I just want to take this opportunity to make that clarification, and answer any questions, if there were any.
Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
As Mr. Vasquez indicated, he does have support of the Neighborhood Association and P and Z, so I'll move item 49.
Item 50, and a proposed renaming of the segment of Southwest 16th Street extending north of West Martin Luther King Jr. Parkway to 16th Street to 16th Street. The segment of 15th Street extending north of Mulberry to Falcon Drive as Falcon Drive, and the extension of 15th Street south of Walland Street and Westerly to 16th Street as 15th Street. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above. B is the final consideration of the ordinance above, and the waiver is requested by the city traffic engineer and requires six votes. Is there anybody here to speak to this item?
Now that we all understand that, I'll move item 50, 50A and B.
Sounds like a story problem or something from math.
Yeah. How many ducks walked across the street?
Seven, yes?
Item 51, on the violation of the Iowa Alcoholic Beverage Laws, sales to minors of the following. A assessing a $500 penalty to the following. And I will note that on 51 items, A four and eight have been polled. So we're voting on A, 1, 2, and 3, 5, 6, 7, 9, and 10.
And why would those other two be, have been polled? Do we not?
They submitted affirmative defenses. That, my understanding is, in this particular, in these particular situations, they've gone through a training with, with the state certification process. And if they do that, they're able to submit on one offense subsequent to the training. And that's what they've done here.
Thank you.
Anybody to speak? Seeing none, 51, could we have a motion, please? Yep. 1, 2, and 3, 5, 6, 7, and 9 and 10.
Seven, yes?
Item B is an assessment of a $1,500 penalty and a 30-day suspension to Nat Food Mart of 1443 Second Avenue. Is there anybody here to speak to that item?
Mr. Mayor and Senate Council members, I'm Alfredo Perez. My address is 2910 Grand Avenue, and I represent Nat Food Mart. I already submitted a packet of information to you, Mr. Mayor, and the city council members. I don't want to repeat the details of the information in there, but I want to emphasize a couple of points. One is that I understand the council need for consistency in how the issue disciplines. However, I think that there is something unique about this particular matter. What we're asking, not only is the, the council reconsider, I understand there are long odds with regard to that. However, I think for a couple of other matters, the council could give some leeway. And they are in two areas that I addressed in my application. The first is the fact that this business has been in existence since 2000. They had two, two violations, one in May, and another one in August, the entire time they have been in business. They could have a hardship issue with regard to the property tax if the suspension goes as designated. Obviously, I've been in touch with legal counsel for the city to try to work out some type of compromise. Unfortunately, we've been unable to do so. So we're asking, number one, that you consider the fact of delaying the suspension to a certain time after the Drake relays, is one of our requests, that he be allowed to take his suspension after that date. And the second thing is that you consider, is that how the store has divided up its sales, it's a C violation. And we're specifically asking that you consider that it apply only to the license regarding the beer and wine, and not to the liquor. The liquor is divided off and separated approximately 30 feet. So we're just asking that he needs to pay his property taxes. So we're just asking it to be delayed. The other thing that we did, we showed you how they have now, the two people who were involved in this have in fact been terminated. They have in fact taken them all through the training. However, as the policy that you just voted on, obviously, they'd taken it through with regard to the first $500 assessment, and it got networked out. We wouldn't be standing here today, because it would be only one violation, because they'd be allowed to do a deferred. That's what we're asking the council to do in this situation. And I don't think I have anything to add, unless you have some specific questions, but my clients are here, if you have any questions for them.
Mayor, members of the council, mayor and members?
Do you want them to be at the podium?
Sure. Mayor, members of council, Doug Phillips, Legal Department. I, I do agree that consistency is important, and in these matters where we have two violations in a period of two years, the state code does direct how, what the penalties should be. And it's, it's $500 on the first one. That's been paid by Nat Foods, and that was at a previous council meeting. And now we have the second violation. And as for a second violation, the code requires a $1,500 civil penalty and a 30-day suspension. The, because we have a second offense for selling alcohol to minors. Now, another thing that the Alcohol Beverage Division is consistent about is how they treat their licensing. The, the request to just have it apply to the beer license would not be upheld, in my opinion, at the Alcohol Beverage Division, because they treat all of the lesser licenses under an E as one license. In other words, they combine the licenses and treat them as one. So the suspension goes to the licensed premise. And in this case, we don't have two separate licensed premises. We have, as submitted by their diagram, one premise that's under both of these licenses. In fact, the diagram is exactly the same for each of the licenses that were issued. So there's no reason to treat it as two separate premises, and the suspension should apply to both licenses, in my opinion. As far, as far as when you have the, the suspension, I think that's a different matter. And I believe that, you know, in your best discretion, you can choose a 30-day period. You know, that's even different than what is suggested in the roll call. But the, the roll call 30-day period was put at, at that, during that timeframe, to allow for an appeal period.
And just to clarify, if I may, Mayor, our, our advice, however, even though council certainly has the discretion to move the suspension, excuse me, and the time period, our advice is probably not to, to open up that Pandora's Box, or you'll potentially have every licensee down here wanting to argue and debate their time of suspension with council.
I'm, I'm perfectly comfortable moving the motion as is. I mean, I think it's perfectly reasonable to be objective in our scheduling, so that it's consistent, regardless of what events may or may not be coming up. I think that's kind of irrelevant to, to statute and ordinance, in my opinion. So I would move the motion as, as presented.
All right, item C, assessment of a $1,500 penalty and a 30-day suspension to Come and Go, 2722 2211 University Avenue. Anybody here to speak to this item? Seeing none, could we have a motion?
My motion would be the same.
Item 52, conditionally approving the urban renewal agreement for the sale of real estate to Helena to Helena Industries, Inc., for an expansion of its regional office and industrial facility at 3525 Vandelia Road and to continue to February 25 at 5:00 PM. This was earlier continued from January 14. Anybody here to speak to this? Seeing none?
Move 52.
Seven, yes.
All right. It's 5:27, and this concludes our hearings. Item 53 is amendments to the Des Moines Sidewalk Cafe program, council communication number 13-37. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above, and B is the final consideration of the ordinance above. Waiver is requested by the Community Development Department and requires six votes. Anybody here to speak to the Des Moines Sidewalk Cafe program?
I'll move 53, A and B.
Seven, yes.
Item 54 is to receive and file the record from Plan and Zoning Commission and the recommendation regarding a request from the Union Pacific Railroad to vacate the following four segments of street right of way where the railroad right of way intersects, subject to conditions. This is council communication number 13-040. A is the whole avenue between Delaware Avenue and Dixon. B is Scott Avenue between Southeast 20th Street and Southeast 22nd Street. C is Southeast 34th Street between Scott Avenue and East Court Avenue, and D is Southeast 36th Street at a point north of Scott Avenue. Our purpose again here this evening is to receive and file. We are not having a hearing this evening on these items. This is just to receive the recommendation. I believe there was considerable discussion at the Planning and Zoning Commission. Mr. Manager, would you like to make a quick comment on this one?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That is correct. This is a receive and file action. There's not a request to set the hearing date. We are aware that there are significant concerns that have been expressed about these proposals. And frankly, Mayor and council, it seems like the most prudent thing would be to see if there are changes that can be made in the proposal that would make it more palatable to the community. There are, I believe, significant benefits from the proposals that are out there, but clearly, there are many objections. And so rather than try to bring this proposal forward as it exists right now, it would seem like the better course would be to let us work more with the railroad, with Union Pacific, to see if additional changes or modifications could be made in what's been proposed, and then bring that back to you for further discussion at that point. In any event, there would have to be a public hearing and discussion with all those affected before council could take any further action. I can't tell you right now, Mayor and council, when that hearing date would be set, but we would have to come back to you, set the date of hearing, and then actually conduct the hearing. So there will be ample opportunity for folks to learn about what's being discussed and meet and provide input to this council at the public hearing or even prior to that.
Question, yeah.
Questions, council, you have?
Rick, would this go back to Plan and Zoning then, once you, if you work out some additional benefits?
Mr. Mahaffey, council members, I really think that would probably be up to council in terms of how you want to go forward. My suggestion is the P and Z has met. I think if we can identify changes to what's been out there in the proposal, my intention would be to bring that back to you and let you deal with it. And frankly, this is, this is an issue that has a lot of concern on the part of the city, and it seems to me it really ought to be directed by this council in terms of how we go forward. So I would bring the issue back to you and seek your guidance on it. It's not necessary that it would go back to P and Z Commission, but if that was your direction, we could certainly do that.
Well, there are some commissioners who was thinking that maybe they could get some other things from the UP, and that may change some of their votes. So it'll come back to us, and then we can recommend or not whether it goes back to P and Z.
Mr. Mahaffey, that would certainly be my thought.
I appreciate the thought about it coming back to here because if it, if there's not a proposal that's worthy among all of us, there's really no reason to send it down there for a whole bunch of heartache and a, you know, a long discussion. If it doesn't have much merit, there's probably no reason for us to send it on.
Well, my thought was it was a split vote at P and Z, eight to five, and maybe somebody thinks could change some of their positions.
Skip?
I'd like to first point out that we received a letter of clarification from the MPO tonight, and at P and Z, they received a letter that indicated that the MPO supported this. The clarification indicates they neither support or oppose these closings. So that might have changed the vote at the Planning and Zoning, too, where it'd been greater people opposed to it. The other thing I'd like to point out is this all started about two and a half, three years ago with the request, what can we do about the four crossings between the Fairgrounds Neighborhood Association and Capitol East? They've put up with those crossings being blocked for generations, and what do we get in return out of this? But oh, let's close three or four more crossings. That's their answer to it. And they indicated right here at this podium, I didn't hear any guarantees at all that their proposals are going to mitigate those closures in those other four crossings. And I'm, I'll go along with this going back, but I'm rather disgusted by the whole process. I think it should be tabled until we clear up those other four crossings and come up with a resolve for them.
If that's it, I'll make a motion that...
We have a motion, but we ought to open up, see if there's anybody would like to make a comment while this is not a hearing. Excuse me. That, but if somebody's going to make a comment tonight, we would hope that that would be our comment when we do have the hearing, because we don't want to hear repetitive comments. Although I will say that if there's a significant change in the recommendation on the part of anybody, why certainly it would change our whole discussion, I would think, in front of not only the council but everybody else. Yes, sir.
Marty Mock, 2701 Arthur. I'll keep my notes back there, so it won't be very long. There's only one thing that I think I would like to pass on to this process that, and it would be the fact that while we're looking at four closings, actually three closings because one's already practically closed anyway, what we'd like to see to come back is a full picture from Union Pacific about what they're planning to do in the long term. Not just those where we're pitting one neighborhood against another neighborhood, one section against another section, but let's look at the whole thing. I think that's the reason why Plan and Zoning really voted it down, was from a planning perspective, it just was not complete. There was not enough there. We've already heard rumors that there are maybe one or two other closings that they're going to want to request. Well, that all should be on the table when this comes back. So my only encouragement is let's look at the whole picture from one edge of the city, the other edge of the city, and see what's actually going to happen. Thank you.
All right. Got a motion?
I'd make a motion to receive and file the plan from Plan Zoning back to our staff and Rick for further study.
Item 55, collective bargaining agreement between the city and AFSMI, council 61 and its affiliated local 3673 AFSMI for the period of July 1, 2013 through July 30, 2016, council communication number 13-039. Is there anybody here to speak to this item? Seeing none?
Move 55.
Item 56, it's a bid from GNS Services, Inc. for an annual contract with four additional one-year renewal options to furnish towing, storage and disposition services of junk vehicles for the use by Neighborhood Inspection Division, annual estimated revenue of $85,760.45. There were four bids mailed and three received, council communication number 13-33. Is there anybody in the audience to speak to this item? Seeing none, could we have a motion?
Well, is anybody have any concerns about the prices that the one we're selecting is charging our residents?
I do.
So do I.
All right.
I just don't see what such a difference between what the other two is proposed versus the one that we selected.
You want to go over that for the record?
Let's see, let me find it here. Bid 56. You got it there. Well, the dollar amount to the city for the demolition, for the vehicles, $191 for one. B is 232, and C is the one selected is 279, which brings in a lot of additional revenue there for the city. But you take a towing charge, A is proposed 65, B 65, and C is $125. And daily storage is $15 for A and B, and C is $25 for the daily, daily storage charge. Towing charge to the city to move and retain any vehicles, towing charge is 30 for A, 45 B, 65 for C, the one that's been proposed. Daily storage charge, $5, A, B is $8, and $13 for the proposed selected company. Per hour moving charge, $45 for A, 55 for B, and $75 for C. It's really a lot additional cost for the residents than on the proposed one than A and B. It just doesn't seem that there should be that much difference, so I didn't think that that should be put upon our residents.
Would you want to clear the board?
Pardon?
No, I'm just...
Oh. Anyhow, that's my concern, and I realize there's going to be more revenue coming from the, to the city, but, you know, I think we have to be fair with our residents also.
Okay, so do you want to continue with the motion we have? Or further discussion? Skip, did you have a comment?
It just seems to me that the reason they're paying us more for impounding these vehicles, they're going to make it up on the back end for our residents, and I agree with Bob on it.
I'm GNS Service.
Go ahead.
Darrell Beam, address 3245 Turner Avenue Street. I'm with GNS Service. The reason the towing is a little higher, we already help Swifts out when they get motorhomes and things like that when they need them towed. Picking up the junk vehicles isn't just going out, picking the vehicle up and towing it. Fifty, seventy-five percent of the time, we have to go out, air the tires up, pull drive shafts out, so on and so forth. So it's not as easy as just going out, hooking up to the car and just towing it, okay? So we're trying to best guess how much time, most of the time, we spend 45 minutes to an hour, you know, hooking up to a vehicle, you know? So we're, you know, the price is just gauging on how much time it takes us to tow a vehicle.
But whether it's you or someone else doing it is going to have the same amount of time.
They're going to have the same amount of time, whether, whether it's what you think your time is worth, okay? You know, I mean, that's, that's what it's all about, is, you know, we're just trying to get paid for our time doing the job.
Anybody have any questions, this gentleman?
I guess I would just be, not necessarily for you, but from the staff's perspective, if they could give us a little more background on looking at this. Obviously, they've made a recommendation here, but I guess in response to the issues that are being raised.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, one comment for you. You do, I think what you're hearing here from our council members, we not only represent, obviously, the city in our operations, we also represent citizens.
You betcha, I understand that.
And so I think that it was fairly clearly stated that there is a concern that, while I understand your position...
You bet.
It appears to us in looking at it that it's essentially twice as much for you to hook up as anybody else.
Right, right.
Okay.
Correct, correct, you know, everything, but you also got to take into consideration you're doing motorhomes, semi-hides cars and everything like that, you know? I mean, it's, you know, it's just, but, and I don't know how many of them get picked up either. You know, I don't have any idea how, what's the percentage of them getting picked up. I mean, I think it's very few, you know? I think it's like 20%. I think Swift told me to get picked up as well, so, you know, it's, most of them are going to go to auction and get junked, so.
Mr. Mahaffey, I think your concern is, is a fair and appropriate one, and I hear from the mayor and Skip and others, perhaps others share the same, the same commentary. But my suggestion to you is rather than rejecting this, if you would continue it and let us come back with the analysis, just to make sure you've got the complete information about what these are and then make the decision. But that's not, that's not my sentiment that I disagree with you, it's just I want to make sure that, that what you're looking at is an accurate reflection of those cough differentials in terms of its impact on our residents, and if you give me a chance to the next meeting, I can come back and have better information on that particular point.
Do we have a motion already?
Yes.
We do, so we have to make a...
I'd be willing to continue till the next meeting.
Okay, you made the motion, okay.
Okay, so the item continued to the next hearing, which time we're going to get a report back from staff, hopefully prior to that, and we might even want to put it on a workshop. Because it seems to come back again and again.
And again and again.
Okay, item 57, accepting a developer-initiated redevelopment proposal from East Village Growth Partners, LLC to redevelop a disposition parcel number 02-1A at 350 East Locust Street, Metro Center Urban Renewal Area, setting the date of public hearing on the intent to accept said proposal and authorizing the notice of intent to enter into an agreement to purchase land for private redevelopment if no competing proposals are received. And that would occur March 11? Is that right, Mr. Manager? 13. Council communication number 13-42. Anybody here to speak to that?
I'll move 57 if there's no one to speak.
I do have one question on it. In looking at the information on the blue letter, it says if this project is not selected, the developer will request withdrawal of the proposal. So it's really contingent upon the CDBG DR bond. Is that correct?
Yes, and Hensley, I think, I think that's accurate. I see mat nodding is head. However, I'll just offer my own personal view, that is, if, if, I mean, you have a lot of projects that are trying to get CDBG DR dollars. If this particular project isn't selected, it would be my hope that they would at least consider continuing to work with our staff to see if there are alternative ways to skin the cap, so.
I would encourage us to do so because we do have some great projects, and I would hate to see them just drop off as a result of not getting this, because we're, I believe, looking at making recommendations of two.
That is, yeah.
Can we get clarification on this? Because I also agree that this, you know, the action to begin this process shouldn't be determined on the DR that we don't have any control of unless that's the desire of all the developer...
I think it's fair to say, and I know Matt's coming up here, but Mr. Rittmas here in the audience, if he wants to address some of this. It's a very difficult project because of the size of it. It's very important to the East Village that we get it done. I think at this point, it's important that we pass 57, but Matt, if you want to take it from there.
Yeah, from, Matt Anderson, Assistant City Manager. From a procedural standpoint, if this project were to either not make it to, to the city council's top two for scoring, or were to not receive an award from the state, what we would do is we'd have to, we'd have to basically stop and unwind this current urban renewal offering, because as you recall in an urban renewal disposition, we set up the developer-initiated proposal, and then it becomes a meet, or it becomes a, an open competition for the land essentially. And so someone can come in and meet or beat the terms of, of that proposal. Well, currently, that proposal that Mr. Rittmas submitted includes CDBG DR as part of his proposal, and he knows that he's going to have to change his pro forma and change his project if he doesn't have that pot of funds available, he'll have to find another source. So the new pro forma is going to kind of set a new set of rules for the meet or beat in, in the competition. So we would, we would continue to work with him and find other sources to fill the gap, but that kind of changes the rules of the game for anyone else who's going to come in and compete. So at that point, if he's not one of the selected projects, we just stop that process and then start over with a new urban renewal offering that would come back, you know, a month or two later, once we have new, new terms negotiated. And to your point, Ms. Mahaffey, we will, we have a lot of great projects that we know are going to come through, and unfortunately, we're only going to get one or two of them. So we, we're not going to kick them to the curb. We're going to sit down with all those developers and see if we can find some way to make it work. They, they may or may not, but we're going to, we're going to try our best to get it to work.
Very good.
You don't turn away that-
It's a lot of good stuff.
Yeah.
This, we've been through a developer-initiated proposal on this very site, I think.
We didn't quite get, we didn't quite get there. What we did with, what, what council recommendation was on the last project that was brought forward by Hatch Development, Soho and Hatch were both looking at it at that time. Council directed staff to work with Hatch Development to bring, to bring forward a developer-initiated proposal, and then we never got to that stage in six or seven years have passed, and Mr. Rittmas is in front of us now. So it's, it's a great development site.
Well, I, I think it's, I think it's really positive, and, and it's, a priority block over there has been as long as I've watched the East Village.
I think it's, it's, the reason that this is important is it's very difficult, it's a very small parcel. It's just, I mean, if this doesn't, if this doesn't go through, then it's very, very difficult. Is that fair, Matt?
Yeah, it has some development challenges. It's kind of an orphaned site. When East Village Square Apartments was developed, this one, we thought, we knew it was big enough to put a building on, it's going to have parking constraints, you just, yeah, that, it's a, it's just not quite big enough to, to do conventionally, so the CDBG DR would, would be really helpful in this project.
Any other questions? Matt, thank you.
Move.
Seven yes.
That completes our city council agenda for this evening. Could we have a motion to adjourn? Hold, favor say aye?
Aye.
We sit adjourned.